It's just, they are still photocopying the bills. And so, once that's all done and everything, and you can review, then we'll start. We'll come back out of recess, okay? We're still in recess. Let's let you back session. Senator Gomitalto, you are recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill #103-38 to allow me to make an amendment.
On the motion, notwithstanding the House rules, to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill 108 or 103-38 COR, are there any objections? Hearing, seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Gomitalto, you can continue.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move to amend on line 15, page 3, to read six to nine months of temporary certification. Mr. Speaker, the amendment is as per the recommendation of the committee that is also for consistency, that is on line 17.
On the motion to amend, is there any member who wishes, would like to speak? Are there any objections? Seeing and hearing no objections, motion carries. Senator Gomitalto, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to place Bill #103-38 COR as amended on the floor on the third reading file, and I also ask that it return to its same place.
On the motion to place Bill #103-38 COR, back to the third reading in its place, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you so much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. General Lady from Zonia, ma'am, you are recognized.
Sis, just, Masi, I'd like to, also notwithstanding the rules, move to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill #5 in order to make a technical amendment to it.
On the motion, notwithstanding the House rules, to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill #5-38, are there any objections? Seeing and hearing no objection, motion carries.
Sis, just, Masi. Mr. Speaker, so this amendment is on page 1, line 16, where it currently says, "And any wars or hostile operations recognized with written concurrence of the Guam National Guard or Department of Military Affairs," and to change the words "Guam National Guard" or "Department of Military Affairs" to "Guam Office of Veterans Affairs."
On that amendment, are there any discussions? Any objections to that amendment? No objections to that amendment? So ordered.
Sis, just, Masi, colleagues, I'd like to move, then, Mr. Speaker, that Bill #5, as amended by the Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs and further amended on the floor, be moved to the third reading and returned to the same place.
On the motion, okay, to move Bill 5-38 back to third reading and to keep it in its place, are there any objections? Hearing, seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Duan Yishu, you are recognized.
Sis, just, Masi, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move to go back to motions.
On the motion, hearing no objections, motion carries. Senator Duan Yishu, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. At this time, I'd like to move to place Bill #44-38 COR on session agenda. Of course, you know, Bill #44-38 COR, Committee on Rules by the request of Imago Agan Guahan, the Governor of Guam in accordance to the Organic Act of Guam, an act making appropriations for the operations of the executive branch of government of Guam for fiscal year ending September 30, 2026, making other appropriations and establishing miscellaneous administrative provisions. Mr. Speaker, we attempted to get the committee report here yesterday, but because of the tsunami warning and the legislature shutting down, we weren't able to submit the committee report until this morning. It is over 1,000-page document. So, the committee report is currently being uploaded and will be available well before you call session again to introduce the substitute version. So, we will make all of those timelines, Mr. Speaker, but it's important that we get this budget act on the agenda now so that we can reconvene when you call session next week to introduce a substitute version.
On the motion, are there any objections? Ma'am?
Speaker, can you please clarify when is session next week?
What we're gonna probably do is go into session on the 8th, which is next week, Friday?
Correct.
Just for the purposes of providing the documentation to the members, and then we convene on the afternoon of the 11th.
To give everybody a chance to review the budget, we will put the substitute bill on the floor and then allow, over the weekend and all day Monday in the morning, and we'll convene back at 2:00 in the afternoon on the 11th to begin the budget process.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, Sis, just, Masi. If the bill is reviewed by CORE, can it be uploaded before the 8th?
That's the process, that's what we want to be working on right now.
That's what we're working on right now.
That's what, okay, that's what is gonna be worked on. But I don't want anything, nothing to happen with regard until at least the 8th. But not to have any deliberations until the 11th.
All right, but is the motion then to, because I just wanted some assurance that we're gonna be able to get this up, Bill?
Yes.
If we're agreeing to put it on the agenda without going to the Committee on Rules meeting, publishing any notice about that being on our agenda, so we're gonna see this up bill before the 8th?
Yes.
That will be uploaded, like, in the day or two? This weekend?
It will be uploaded by the evening before the 8th, for sure.
Ah.
Yeah.
But that's why I'm not gonna have any deliberations until the 11th. Are there any objections to the motion? What, General Lady from Baragao, you have a recognition?
Yeah, I have a point of inquiry. Is the substitute bill significantly different from the introduced bill?
That will, that's why we're gonna need this time to be able for you to review that. I'm not going to have, we're not going to go into deliberations on the bill on the 8th. That is gonna be, give you enough time over the week to, so that the bill can be in your hand at least by the 8th, so you can have all weekend before we start deliberations on the 11th. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
If it's possible, Mr. Speaker, if the bill has been submitted to CORE already, if we could just see that version so we can start working on it, because the 9th and the 10th are weekends, and of course, while we work weekends, our staff, I mean, that's, as he said, a voluminous document. We just need some time to get through that, if we're going to be efficient in here.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, we'll get into consideration. Okay. Any objections to the motion? No objections to the motion, so ordered.
Sis, just, Masi, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, we're gonna stand in recess until we get the bills for, to, Senator Lohan.
The Speaker, I move to third reading file to vote.
Okay, we're moving to the third reading file to vote. On the motion, it's non-debatable. Okay, on the motion. Okay, any objections? No objections, so ordered. We're in recess.
...
Ladies and gentlemen, it is back in session. We are in the third reading. Start off with Bill number 139-38-COR. Clerk, please read the title.
Sorry, one moment. Bill number five has not been engrossed to include the change that was made today. Or the bills that were changed today were not engrossed to include those changes?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Mrs. Montes, I'd like to move to vote on Bill number five without engrossment.
On the motion. Any objections? So order. Bill 139-38-COR, clerk, please read the title.
Bill number 139-38-COR, as amended by Committee on Child Welfare, Youth Affairs, Senior Citizens, and Hagatnia Restoration, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Shelley V. Calvo, Therese M. Terlahey, William A. Parkinson, V. Anthony Ada, Vincent A. V. Borja, Sabrina Solis Matanani, Joe S. Augustine, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Sabina Flores Perez, Frank F. Blas Jr., Shang Yumetao Tao, Christopher M. Duñez, Jesse A. Luhon, Chris Barnett. An act to add new section 13321.1 and 13321.2 to Article Three, Chapter Thirteen, Title Nine, Guam Code annotated, relative to establishing the Foster Care Bill of Rights and to cite this act as the Foster Care Bill of Rights Act of 2025.
Rule call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumetao Tao. Senator Gumetao Tao, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes.
Vice Speaker, you're welcome.
Mr. Speaker, I make a motion to excuse those not present for voting.
On the motion. Any objection? So ordered.
Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator Sin Augustine. Senator Sin Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahey. Senator Terlahey, yea.
Bill Number 139-38-COR received fourteen yays, one excuse. Bill Number 139-38-COR is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 110-38-COR, clerk, please read the title.
Bill Number 110-38-COR, as amended by the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Build-Up, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Elections, and Retirement, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Shang Yumetao Tao, Telot T. Taidegui, Shelley V. Calvo. An act to add a new chapter sixteen to Title Five, Guam Code annotated, relative to codifying the Criminal Justice Automation Commission.
Rule call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumetao Tao. Senator Gumetao Tao, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator Sin Augustine. Senator Sin Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahey. Senator Terlahey, yea.
Bill Number 110-38-COR received fourteen yays, one excuse. Bill Number 110-38-COR is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 81-38-COR, clerk, please read the title.
Bill Number 81-38-COR, as amended by the Committee on Land, Environment, Housing, Agriculture, Parks and Infrastructure, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by V. Anthony Ada, Shelley V. Calvo, Shang Yumetao Tao. An act to amend subsection 12401DC-53, Article Four, Chapter Twelve, Title Twenty-Five, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, relative to correcting the definitions of solar HVAC contractors' subclassifications of licenses.
Rule call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumetao Tao. Senator Gumetao Tao, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator Sin Augustine. Senator Sin Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahey. Senator Terlahey, yea.
Bill Number 81-38-COR received fourteen yays, one excuse. Bill Number 81-38-COR is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 149-38LS, clerk, please read the title.
Bill Number 149-38LS, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Therese M. Terlahey, Telot T. Taidegui, Chris Barnett, Shelley V. Calvo, Sabrina Solis Matanani, V. Anthony Ada, Sabina Flores Perez, Joe S. Augustine, Christopher M. Duñez, Shang Yumetao Tao, Jesse A. Luhon, William A. Parkinson, Frank F. Blas Jr. An act to amend subsection 7160E and 7161F of Chapter Seven, Title Sixteen, Guam Code annotated, relative to waiving veterans license plate fees.
Rule call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumetao Tao. Senator Gumetao Tao, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator Sin Augustine. Senator Sin Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahey. Senator Terlahey, yea.
Bill Number 149-38LS received fourteen yays, one excuse. Bill Number 149-38LS is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 30-38-COR, clerk, please read the title.
Bill Number 30-38-COR, as amended by the Committee on Transportation, Tourism, Customs, Utilities, and Federal and Foreign Affairs, and substituted on the floor. Introduced by Sabina Flores Perez, V. Anthony Ada, Chris Barnett, Shelley V. Calvo, Sabrina Solis Matanani, Telot T. Taidegui, Therese M. Terlahey. An act to add a new Article Eleven to Chapter Five One A, Title Ten, Guam Code annotated, and add a new subsection 14104Q to Chapter Fourteen, Title Twelve, Guam Code annotated, relative to establishing the Guam Solid Waste Authority Island-Wide Collection Plan.
Rule call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumetao Tao. Senator Gumetao Tao, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator Sin Augustine. Senator Sin Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahey. Senator Terlahey, yea.
Bill Number 30-38-COR received fourteen yays, one excuse. Bill Number 30-38-COR is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 45-38-COR, clerk, please read the title.
Bill Number 45-38-COR, as amended on the floor. Introduced by William A. Parkinson, Shelley V. Calvo, Sabina Flores Perez. An act to add a new chapter ninety-five to Title Nine, Guam Code annotated, relative to requiring those convicted of vehicular homicide while impaired to pay restitution to the surviving minor children of the victim, and to cite this act as Bentley's Law.
Rule call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumetao Tao. Senator Gumetao Tao, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator Sin Augustine. Senator Sin Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahey. Senator Terlahey, yea.
Bill Number 45-38-COR received fourteen yays, one excuse. Bill Number 45-38-COR is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 92-38-COR, clerk, please read the title.
Bill Number 92-38-COR, as amended by the Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Sabrina Solis Matanani, Frank F. Blas Jr., Shang Yumetao Tao, Christopher M. Duñez, Vincent A. V. Borja, Telot T. Taidegui, Chris Barnett, Shelley V. Calvo, V. Anthony Ada, Jesse A. Luhon, William A. Parkinson, Joe S. Augustine, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Therese M. Terlahey, Sabina Flores Perez. An act to add a new section 1041 to Chapter Ten, Title One, Guam Code annotated, relative to designating the month of November as Veterans Service Recognition Month in Guam, and establishing programs and activities to honor and support veterans throughout the month.
Rule call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumetao Tao. Senator Gumetao Tao, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator Sin Augustine. Senator Sin Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahey. Senator Terlahey, yea.
Bill Number 92-38 received fourteen yays, one excuse. Bill Number 92-38-COR is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 153-38-COR, clerk, please read the title.
Bill Number 153-38-COR, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Telot T. Taidegui. An act to amend section 4102 and 4104 of Chapter Four, Title Three, Guam Code annotated, relative to modernizing precinct realignment and the composition of precinct boards.
Rule call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumetao Tao. Senator Gumetao Tao, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator Sin Augustine. Senator Sin Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahey. Senator Terlahey, yea.
Bill Number 153-38-COR received fourteen yays, one excuse. Bill Number 153-38-COR is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 97-38LS, clerk, please read the title.
Bill Number 97-38LS, as amended by the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Build-Up, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Elections, and Retirement, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Frank F. Blas Jr., Telot T. Taidegui, Shang Yumetao Tao, Therese M. Terlahey, Sabina Flores Perez, Shelley V. Calvo, Jesse A. Luhon, V. Anthony Ada, Chris Barnett, Sabrina Solis Matanani. An act to repeal and reenact Chapter Eleven, Title Twelve, Guam Code annotated, and to amend subsection 45.30B and subsection 45.40 of Chapter Forty-Five, Title Eight, Guam Code annotated, relative to the reorganization of the Public Defender Service Corporation to provide effective legal aid and services to persons who are entitled to counsel under the Organic Act of Guam, the laws of Guam, and the United States Constitution, and to cite this act as the Public Defender Service Corporation Act of 2025.
Rule call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumetao Tao. Senator Gumetao Tao, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator Sin Augustine. Senator Sin Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahey. Senator Terlahey, yea. Senator Terlahi, yea.
Bill number ninety-seven thirty-eight LS received fourteen yays, one excused. Bill number ninety-seven thirty-eight LS is duly passed by the body. Bill number forty-eight thirty-eight cor. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill number four-eight thirty-eight cor as amended by the Committee on Education, Libraries and Public Broadcasting and substituted and amended on the floor. Introduced by Vincent A. V. Borja, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Frank F. Blash Jr., Christopher M. Duñez, Sabrina Solis Matanani, Shelley V. Calvo, Jesse A. Luhon, Joe S. San Augustine, Telot T. Taidegui, V. Anthony Ada, Sean Gumatautau, Sabina Flores Perez, Chris Barnett, Therese M. Terlahi, William A. Parkinson. An act to add a new section four-one-three-two of Article One Chapter Four Title Four Guam Code annotated relative to authorizing limited leave benefits for retired teachers rehired on contract to fill teaching vacancies.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahi, yea.
Bill number forty-eight thirty-eight cor received fourteen yays, one excused. Bill number forty-eight thirty-eight cor is duly passed by the body. Bill number five thirty-eight cor. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill number five thirty-eight cor as amended by the Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Joe S. San Augustine, Sean Gumatautau, Chris Barnett, Sabrina Solis Matanani, Shelley V. Calvo, Frank F. Blash Jr., William A. Parkinson, Sabina Flores Perez, Telot T. Taidegui, Therese M. Terlahi. An act to amend subsection seven-one-two-zero-point-two-D-one of Chapter Seven Title Sixteen Guam Code annotated relative to veteran license plate designs and recognitions.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahi, yea.
Bill number five thirty-eight cor received fourteen yays, one excused. Bill number five thirty-eight cor is duly passed by the body. Bill number one-zero-zero thirty-eight cor. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill number one-zero-zero thirty-eight cor as amended by the Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Sabina Flores Perez, Chris Barnett, Telot T. Taidegui, Shelley V. Calvo, Therese M. Terlahi, Sean Gumatautau, William A. Parkinson, V. Anthony Ada, Frank F. Blash Jr., Christopher M. Duñez, Jesse A. Luhon. An act to amend section one-one-zero-two, Chapter One Division One to amend subsection two-four-zero-seven-F of Article Four Chapter Two Division One. Add a new subsection eight-zero-one-one-zero-C-eleven to Chapter Eighty Division Four. Add a new subsection eight-six-one-zero-five-E to Chapter Eighty-Six, all of Title Ten Guam Code annotated. Amend subsection one-two-two-one-five-B of Article Two. Add a new subsection one-two-three-one-seven-D to Article Three. Add a new subsection one-two-four-six-one-E to Article Four. Add a new subsection one-two-five-one-zero-D to Article Five. Add a new subsection one-two-six-two-two-D to Article Six. Amend subsection one-two-eight-two-four-B of Article Eight. Add a new subsection one-two-one-zero-zero-two-C to Article Ten. Add a new section one-two-one-two-zero-two-point-one to Article Twelve. Amend subsection one-two-one-three-zero-one-F of Article Thirteen. Amend subsection one-two-one-three-zero-two-F of Article Thirteen. Amend subsection one-two-one-three-zero-three-F of Article Thirteen. Amend section one-two-one-six-zero-five of Article Sixteen. Add a new subsection one-two-one-seven-zero-five-F to Article Seventeen. Add a new subsection one-two-one-eight-zero-five-C to Article Eighteen. Add a new section one-two-two-zero-zero-six to Article Twenty. Add a new subsection one-two-two-one-zero-two-D to Article Twenty-One. Amend section one-two-two-three-two-four of Article Twenty-Three, all of Chapter Twelve, Title Ten Guam Code annotated. Add a new subsection three-one-zero-two-point-one-T to Chapter Three. Amend section one-six-one-zero-four-point-one of Chapter Sixteen. Add a new subsection three-one-one-zero-eight-eight to Chapter Thirty-One, all of Title Seventeen Guam Code annotated and to amend section two-one-zero-two of Chapter Two Title Seven Guam Code annotated relative to increasing awareness and strengthening early childhood development and literacy by expanding Guam's early childcare and education system.
Everybody get there? Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahi, yea.
Bill number one-zero-zero thirty-eight cor received fourteen yays, one excused. Bill number one-zero-zero thirty-eight cor is duly passed by the body. Bill number one-five-four thirty-eight cor. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill number one-five-four thirty-eight cor as amended by the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Build-Up, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Elections and Retirement and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Telot T. Taidegui, Sean Gumatautau, Shelley V. Calvo, Frank F. Blash Jr., Vincent A. V. Borja, Jesse A. Luhon. An act to amend subsection three-one-zero-two-A and add a new subsection three-one-zero-two-point-one-h to Chapter Three Title Three and amend subsection three-one-zero-three-point-three-C-one of Chapter Three Title Sixteen Guam Code annotated relative to requiring documentary proof of United States citizenship to align Guam voter registration practices with federal election integrity standards.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett, pass. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahi, nay. Senator Barnett, pass. Senator Parkinson, pass. Senator Barnett, pass, nay. Senator Parkinson, pass, nay.
Bill number one-five-four thirty-eight cor received ten yays, four nays, one excused. Bill number one-five-four thirty-eight cor is duly passed by the body. Bill number two-four thirty-eight cor. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill number two-four thirty-eight cor as amended by the Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs and further amended on the floor. Introduced by William A. Parkinson. An act to add a new chapter ninety-eight to Title Ten Guam Code annotated relative to emergency contraception for survivors of rape.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja, pass. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahi, yea. Senator Borja, yea.
Bill number two-four thirty-eight cor received fourteen yays, one excused. Bill number twenty-four thirty-eight cor is duly passed by the body. Bill number five-six thirty-eight cor. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill number five-six thirty-eight cor. Introduced by Therese M. Terlahi. An act to amend subsection seven of subsection one-two-two-zero-two-A. Amend subsections four, seven, and eight of subsection one-two-two-zero-two-B. And amend subsection A-one and two of section one-two-two-zero-three. And subsection B-one and I-two of section one-two-two-zero-five. All of Chapter Twelve Title Ten Guam Code annotated relative to including podiatry under the Guam Board of Medical Examiners and to adopt the rules and regulations and the Code of Ethics for Podiatry.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahi, yea.
Bill number five-six thirty-eight cor received fourteen yays, one excused. Bill number five-six thirty-eight cor is duly passed by the body. Bill number six-eight thirty-eight cor. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill number six-eight thirty-eight cor as amended by the Committee on Education, Libraries and Public Broadcasting and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Frank F. Blash Jr., Sean Gumatautau, Joe S. San Augustine, Therese M. Terlahi, Chris Barnett, Jesse A. Luhon, Sabrina Solis Matanani, Shelley V. Calvo, Telot T. Taidegui, V. Anthony Ada, Sabina Flores Perez, Vincent A. V. Borja. An act to amend subsection one-two-one-zero-seven-Y of Chapter Twelve Title Seventeen Guam Code annotated relative to the responsibility of liabilities of an academy charter school.
Roque.
Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Terlahi, yea.
Bill number six-eight thirty-eight cor received fourteen yays, one excused. Bill number sixty-eight thirty-eight cor is duly passed by the body. Bill number seventy-six thirty-eight cor. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill number seven-six thirty-eight cor as amended by the Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs and further amended on the floor. and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Frank F. Blash Jr., Sabrina Solis Matanani, Telot T. Tidagui, Sean Gumatautau, Shelley V. Calvo, Joe S. San Augustine, Jesse A. Luhon, Vincent A. V. Borja, V. Anthony Ada. An act to add a new Section 2104.1 to Article 1, Part 1, Chapter 2, Title 20, Guam Code Annotated, relative to emergency care immunity from liability.
Roco.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, nay. Speaker Blas. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, pass. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Tidagui. Senator Tidagui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, nay. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, pass. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, pass, nay.
Bill Number 76-38COR received 10 yays, 4 nays, 1 excused. Bill Number 76-38COR is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 84-38COR. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill Number 84-38COR. Committee on Economic Investment, Military Build-Up, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Elections, and Retirement and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Joe S. San Augustine, V. Anthony Ada, Sabrina Solis Matanani, Shelley V. Calvo, Jesse A. Luhon, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Christopher M. Duennius, William A. Parkinson, Telot T. Tidagui. An act to add a new subsection 3101S to Article 1, Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, relative to adopting military certifications as qualification for Guam chauffeurs licenses.
Roco.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Tidagui. Senator Tidagui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, yea.
Bill Number 84-38COR received 14 yays, 1 excused. Bill Number 84-38COR is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 16-38COR. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill Number 16-38COR. Introduced by Sabina Flores Perez, Telot T. Tidagui, Therese M. Terlahe, Chris Barnett. An act to add a new Article 2 to Chapter 2, Title 4, Guam Code Annotated, relative to reporting requirements of the use of unclassified employment.
Roco.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, pass. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Tidagui. Senator Tidagui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, pass. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, pass, nay.
Bill Number 16-38COR received 13 yays, 1 nay, 1 excused. Bill Number 16-38COR is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 103-38COR. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill Number 103-38COR, as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management, and Guam National Guard and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Sean Gumatautau. An act to add a new subsection 51102H11 and amend subsection 51103B4 and 51105B, all of Chapter 51, Title 17, and to amend section 7120 of Chapter 7, Title 2, Guam Code Annotated, relative to authorizing the temporary certification of peace officers and to authorizing the Manpower Development Fund by certification courses required by the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission.
Roco.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Tidagui. Senator Tidagui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, yea.
Bill Number 103-38COR received 14 yays, 1 excused. Bill Number 103-38COR is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 106-38COR. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill Number 106-38COR. As amended by the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Build-Up, Regional Relations, Regulatory Affairs, Technology, Justice, Elections, and Retirement. Introduced by William A. Parkinson. An act to amend subsection 60.80B of Chapter 60, Title 8, Guam Code Annotated, relative to prohibiting plea deals without reasonable proof of victim notification.
Roco.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Tidagui. Senator Tidagui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, yea.
Bill Number 106-38COR received 14 yays, 1 excused. Bill Number 106-38COR is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 17-38COR. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill Number 17-38COR, as amended by the Committee on Finance and Government Operations and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Sabina Flores Perez, Telot T. Tidagui, Therese M. Terlahe, Chris Barnett, Shelley V. Calvo, Sabrina Solis Matanani, Jesse A. Luhon, Vincent A. V. Borja, V. Anthony Ada, Frank F. Blash Jr., Sean Gumatautau. An act to amend section 1913 of Chapter 19, Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, relative to procedures for implementation of audit recommendations by agencies.
Roco.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senators Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Tidagui. Senator Tidagui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, yea.
Bill Number 17-38COR received 14 yays, 1 excused. Bill Number 17-38COR is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 123-38COR. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill Number 123-38COR, as amended by the Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Therese M. Terlahe. An act to add a new subsection 12215A10 and 11 and amend subsection 12101R, subsection 12202A7, subsection 12202B7 and 8, subsection 12203A, subsection 121... I'm sorry, session 121602, session... Section 121604 and Section 121609, all of Chapter 12, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to including physician assistants on the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, updating prescriptive authority for physician assistants and adopting rules and regulations and Code of Ethics for physician assistants.
Roco.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Tidagui. Senator Tidagui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, yea.
Bill Number 123-38COR received 14 yays, 1 excused. Bill Number 123-38COR is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 125-38COR. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill Number 125-38COR. As amended by the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Build-Up, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Elections, and Retirement and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Sean Gumatautau, Christopher M. Duennius, Shelley V. Calvo, Jesse A. Luhon, Sabrina Solis Matanani. An act to add a new section 70133 and renumber the existing section 70133 to section 70134, all of Chapter 70, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to expanding housing availability by authorizing the Department of Revenue and Taxation to issue temporary business licenses for dwelling units that meet inspection requirements established by a certified home inspector licensed by the government of Guam or an inspector certified by the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority.
Roco.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, nay. Speaker Blas. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duennius. Senator Duennius, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, pass. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, yea. Senator Tidagui. Senator Tidagui, yea. Senator Terlahe. Senator Terlahe, nay. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, pass. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, pass, nay.
Bill Number 125-38COR received 10 yays, 4 nays, 1 excused. Bill Number 125-38COR is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 124-38COR. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill Number 124-38COR, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Telot T. Tidagui, Shelley V. Calvo, Chris Barnett, Therese M. Terlahe, Sabina Flores Perez, V. Anthony Ada, Frank F. Blash Jr. An act to amend subsection 403N of Chapter 4, Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, relative to changing the official name of the municipal... Municipality of Assen to its name in the Tramoral Language, namely Assen Maina.
Let's take a recess. Clerk? He's got all of that. But it's not there. Back in session.
Bill Number 124-38COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by Telotie Taidegui, Shelley V. Calvo, Chris Barnett, Therese M. Turlahi, Sabina Flores Perez, V. Anthony Ada, Frank F. Blas Jr., Vincent A. V. Borja, Christopher M. Duñez, Sean Gumatautau, Jesse A. Luhon. An act to amend section, subsection 403N of Chapter 4, Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, relative to changing the official name of the municipality of Assen to its name in the Chamorah language, namely Assen Maina.
Roll call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Turlahi. Senator Turlahi, yea.
Bill Number 124-38COR received fourteen yays, one excused. Bill Number 124-38COR is duly passed by the body. Bill Number 155-38COR. Clerk, please read the title.
Bill Number 155-38COR, as amended by the Committee on Economic Investment, Military Build-Up, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Elections and Retirement, introduced by Telotie Taidegui. An act to add a new Article 3 to Chapter 1, Title 19, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, relative to adopting the rules and regulations for the adjudication of victim claims attached here to as Exhibit A.
Roll call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Nungat.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Turlahi. Senator Turlahi, yea.
Bill Number 155-38COR received fourteen yays, one excused. Bill Number 155-38COR is duly passed by the body. On the matter of vetoed Bill Number 27-38COR, notwithstanding the veto of Imaga Hagan Gohan, should the bill be overridden? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, nay. Speaker Blas.
Yes.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, nay. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, pass. Senator Turlahi. Senator Turlahi, nay. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, pass. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea.
Vetoed Bill Number 27-38COR received ten yays, four nays, and one excused. Vetoed Bill Number 27-38COR was overridden by a vote of members of this body. Ten votes. On the matter of vetoed Bill Number 88-38COR, notwithstanding the veto of Imaga Hagan Gohan, should the Bill 88-38COR be overridden? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas.
Nungat.
Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, pass. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Turlahi. Senator Turlahi, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, pass. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, nay. Yea, I'm sorry. Senator Parkinson, yea.
Vetoed Bill Number 88-38COR received fourteen yays, one excuse. Bill Number, vetoed Bill Number 88-38COR was overridden by a vote of fourteen members of this body. On the matter of vetoed Bill Number 54-38COR, notwithstanding the veto of Imaga Hagan Gohan, should the Bill Number 54-38COR be overridden? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Vice Speaker Ada. Vice Speaker Ada, yea. Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, yea. Speaker Blas. Speaker Blas, yea. Senator Borja. Senator Borja, yea. Senator Calvo. Senator Calvo, yea. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, yea. Senator Gumatautau. Senator Gumatautau, yea. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, yea. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, pass. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, yea. Senator Solis Matanani. Senator Solis Matanani, yea. Senator San Agustin. Senator San Agustin, yea. Senator Taidegui. Senator Taidegui, yea. Senator Turlahi. Senator Turlahi, yea. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, yea.
Vetoed Bill Number 54-38COR received fourteen yays, one excuse. Vetoed Bill Number 54-38COR was overridden by a vote of fourteen members of this body. On the nomination of Juan K. Calvo to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission Board of Commissioners, all in favor, please raise your hand. Juan K. Calvo received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Leilani R. Flores to serve as a member of the Guam Land Use Commission, all in favor, please raise your hand. Leilani R. Flores received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. I apologize, with one percent, it's only a majority vote. On the nomination of Minak- Minakshi V. Hamlani to serve as a member of the Guam Solid Waste Authority Board of Directors, all in favor, please raise your hand. Minakshi V. Hamlani received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Jeffrey D. Kosaka to serve as a member of the Guam Regional Transit Authority Board of Directors, all in favor, please raise your hand. Jeffrey D. Kosaka received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Corazon R. Montelano to serve as a member of the Guam Solid Waste Authority Board of Directors, all in favor, please raise your hand. Corazon R. Monten- Mont- Montelano received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Rose Marie Azuzu Morales to serve as a member of the Civil Service Commission Board of Commissioners, all in favor, please raise your hand. Rose Marie Azuzu Morales received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Ronald C. Pangolin to serve as a member of the Guam Land Use Commission, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ronald C. Pangolin received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Joseph A. Rios to serve as a member of the Guam Land Use Commission, all in favor, please raise your hand. Joseph A. Rios received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Melanie R. Mindiola to serve as a member of the Board of Trustees Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, all in favor, please raise your hand. Melanie R. Mindiola received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. We've exhausted our third reading, so colleagues will be in recess until 9:00 a.m. Friday, August 8th, 9:00 a.m. Friday, August 8th.
Mr. Speaker, can we move the time of the, of the call to session to August 4th? That would give us more time to read the uploaded, the uploaded version of the bill. Because I, I, I feel like, you know, a Friday and a weekend is really too short to be going through such a voluminous bill, over a thousand pages, you know, even working at the best of our capacities, that's not going to be enough time to go through the bill and prepare our amendments before session.
Mr. Speaker, point of information, the committee report is over 1,000 pages. The budget itself should be a little bit over 190 pages, so I think it's going to have plenty of time to review the budget over the weekend, that day, on Friday, over the weekend, and all morning on Monday, and we'll introduce the bill in the afternoon on Monday, and then if that's, no, I mean, we'll actually accept the substitute version on Monday afternoon, if that's not enough time, we can recess for another day or so, but it's plenty of time to review the budget, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very, thank you very much, so noted. Recession to Friday, August 8th, 9:00 a.m.